Good evening. It is now 6:30, and I will call the Monday, April 11th, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate everyone's presence. Staff, thank you very much for your time. The first item this evening is the adoption of the posted agenda. If anyone has any questions, the agenda can be found online at burnsville.org, and the other additional agendas are in the lobby. Commissioners, does anyone have any additions or changes to this evening's posted agenda? None from Commissioners? Staff, any changes this evening?
None from staff.
None from staff. Hearing none, I would stand for a motion.
So moved by the Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh. Second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. The second item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from the March 28th, 2016 meeting. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the minutes from the March 28th meeting? Commissioner Workman.
Commissioner Singh's name was spelled incorrectly on the minutes.
We actually do that once, ever so often, just to see if you guys catch it. Okay? That's a quiz. Any other changes to the minutes? Staff, any changes to the minutes?
No changes. I do apologize. To Commissioner Singh.
Hearing none, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Thomas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. That brings us to our third item this evening. Our third item is a public hearing. It is an application for 11 Investments LLC for a planned unit development amendment to allow a daycare use at 13754 Frontier Court. Presenting this evening is Ms. Deb Garros, our planner. Ms. Garros, as always, thank you, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. We would like to request for the audience that the microphones be turned up. I'm not sure if that can be done from here, or if that needs to be done.
If the what?
To turn up the microphones for the audience.
Okay. Can you hear me okay? No? Everybody else, can you hear me okay? Okay. Thank you. As soon as we get ahold of somebody, we'll... Can everybody make sure that you're... Is adjusted close to you? I think they're on. It just gotta be adjusted closer to you when you're speaking. I know there was an issue with the city council meeting last time.
I repeat the address, please.
The address for the planned unit development, or the amendment, is 13754 Frontier Court. Ms. Garros.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant is here this evening and will be able to address the commission if you have further questions. His name is Abdallah Abdi. And in addition to that, what I'd like to identify for the planning commissioners and for the audience is that since the planning commission packet was put together on Friday, we've received seven additional comments, email comments, from various property owners and businesses. And those have been handed out to the planning commission, so they do have those. And just wanted to make sure that that was known for the public. And that information will also be forwarded to the city council at the time that this application goes to them. The subject site that we are looking at is on Frontier Court, on the northwest corner of Frontier Court and McAndrews Road East. It's identified in the hashed slashing in the middle part of the site location map. On the overhead, the proposed location is the northernmost building of the three buildings that are located on the subject site. And this is the one at 13754 Frontier Court. The property is surrounded by Deeg Pond, which is a neighborhood townhome development. There is a pond, this is known as Deeg Pond itself here. On the subject site, there is also a smaller stormwater detention pond at this location. On the north, we've got the electrical substation, and to the east of that is the city's maintenance facility. Then across Frontier Court, from the subject site, we've got several other businesses that are not part of this particular planned unit development, but they are a part of the overall project site for when this area initially developed. And the closest building to the subject site is at the northeast corner of Frontier Court, McAndrews Road, that is Celadon Systems. And then we've got a copy service facility next to that. At 13755 is a car wash, which I believe is currently now closed. And then Valley Natural Foods is at 13750. To the south of McAndrews Road, we have single-family homes in several different neighborhoods located to the south of the site. As part of this application, as I indicated, there are several planned unit developments over the years that have been approved for this site and other properties in the general vicinity. What this map shows is initially, the green area, which is little over 12 acres, in the early 1990s was platted as a planned unit development. It was all owned by Great River Energy at that time. And they worked with the city of Burnsville to plat another lot to the west for the city's maintenance facility. And then, all of the property to the south was zoned for commercial use at that point in time and to be sold separately to other interested parties. The main reason for the initial PUD was so that the city could purchase the land needed for the maintenance center. And that date dates back to 1993. Then in 1997, the subject site, which is shown here, is located in this location. There was another planned unit development that was approved at this location, and its approval is for what is existing today. They were granted a PUD approval to allow three buildings on one lot. Normally, only one building is allowed. They were also granted some deviations to allow a little less green space than would typically be required. They got a little bit of an increase in hard surface in exchange for them dedicating the easements needed and constructing the stormwater pond that I outlined to help to offset any stormwater issues from surface water draining into ultimately those ponds and then down into Alamagnet Lake. The property across the street was developed later, and there was later PUD approvals separate from the subject site that allowed for certain types of commercial development. And that included a co-op, which is now Valley Natural Foods, and additional commercial sites. And I believe it was in 2012 or 2013, we had Celadon, which is the site directly across from the subject site, that came in for a PUD amendment, and that was to change the office use to allow some light assembly for their particular products that they manufacture at the site. So with that, we have got the three buildings that are on this particular site. And in 1997, there was a negotiated zoning, if you will, associated with that 1997 planned unit development. It involved extensive review and input from the neighborhoods, also from the property owner at that time, which is the electric utility with the city of Burnsville, Department of Natural Resources, et cetera. And what they came up with in that 1997 PUD is something that would be an acceptable use for this property is small office use. So what that means is, for any other type of business that would want to locate in any one of these three buildings on this site, they need to come through a planned unit development amendment process, which is this process that we're going through this evening. So the application specifically is for the northernmost building, and it is to change that use from small office to allow a daycare center. The existing site plan is on the screen. I want you to note that actually to the right is north. We do have, there is an existing business which is located in this northeast corner, office suite number one, which is Phillips Planning Inc. They occupy that tenant space. And then the daycare is proposed to occupy the rest of the building. So this is what the existing floor plan is out there today. And then this is the proposed floor plan. What the applicant is proposing is a daycare center. At the neighborhood meeting, which was held last Thursday night on April 7th, there were three people in attendance, in addition to staff and the applicant. And the items that were talked about at that meeting is that this application is not related at all to the previous community center application. This is a for-profit business. The applicant does own another business in Burnsville. It's the Halal Market, which is located on Nicollet and McAndrews, on the northwest, excuse me, northeast corner. They have, for the past five years, operated also in-home daycare via licensed daycare from state of Minnesota. And what they would like to do is to expand that and are hoping to open a new business, which is the proposed daycare center at this location. For the application, what is being considered is daycare that would service infants approximately six months old through kids that are 12 years old. There are different spaces. They're proposing to change the inside of the building to remove the office suites that were existing, put in basically four areas, one for preschool students, one for school-age students, one for the toddlers, and then a small area for infants. They will also have office, which is located in this middle part of the building, conference room, and a kitchen area. The interior remodel has not started. They have applied for a building permit, and at that point learned that the land use clearance was needed. So no development or remodeling has occurred within this building yet. The applicant is seeking the land use approval for the daycare before they could proceed with their building permit and do the remodeling. So that has not started to date. With this planned unit development, there are no deviations requested, and the benefit would be that daycare would bring a new tenant to a building that was, for the most part, previously vacant. There is a different owner that has taken over this property in the past couple of years. They are different from the owner that negotiated the initial 1997 PUD for the small office use. And what they are doing is, they are having anyone who's interested in locating their business within any of those three buildings make application for a planned unit development amendment to consider the use, if it's anything other than small office. So that's why we're seeing a second application. And I would anticipate there will be more applications in the future until these tenant spaces are filled. Again, the only thing that would be permitted from a land use perspective right now is small office. So that is why we're here this evening. In terms of the site itself, at maximum occupancy, they anticipate they could have up to 116 children. They are looking at 12 total staff, six on each shift, and they're proposing to have two shifts available or open during the day. The daycare center would be open Monday through Friday. It would not be open at all on Saturdays and Sundays. And they're anticipating that they would be open from 6:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night, so a 12-hour time of day. They had indicated in the staff report, I believe, 8 to 8. And the applicant indicated at the neighborhood meeting that they haven't set the specific hours of operation. They know that they want to be open for 12 hours. This is their first time working with a commercial daycare center. And so they're looking at a 12-hour day, Monday through Friday. Depending on when students start coming in, or people want to drop off their kids for the daycare, that's when they'd open and then close thereafter the last people are picked up in the evening. In terms of the meals and snacks that would be offered at this point in time, even though they do have a kitchen, they are proposing and anticipate that everything will be catered. The drop-offs will be provided at the front entry of the building. The meals, as I said, meals and snacks will be catered. Nothing will be prepared on-site. At some point in the future, they may decide that they would like to prepare meals. At that point in time, they do know that they do need additional building permits and state approval for, to be able to do something of that sort. But their plans at this point are the catering of the meals, so no food preparation would be occurring on-site. For the children, they are proposing on the north and part of the west side of the building to have a fenced-in play area for the kids. These would be accessible from inside the building, and they're proposing that there would also be a gate at this end, and then also at this end. The proposal is to enclose the play area with a six-foot-tall chain-link fence. They would have pea gravel that they would put down for the base of the play area, and then just movable play equipment, which they have not specified yet to date. The city engineer, in their review, identified that the site is encumbered by many different drainage and utility easements and electrical easements. On the north side, the proposal will not be within an easement, so the city engineer is okay with them locating the play area there. On the west side, however, there is a drainage and utility easement that almost butts up to the building. And that would be within a drainage and utility easement. However, because there is only the fence and no other structures, the city engineer does not anticipate that there will be issues to this drainage and utility easement from the play area as proposed. The subject site is located within the Shoreland Overlay District. I mentioned that briefly. And that's where impervious surface and green space come into play. The applicant is not proposing any additional impervious or hard surface. Everything would remain pretty much on the site, as indicated, except for changing grass to pea gravel. But as long as water can percolate through that, it's not considered to be impervious surface. As we've discussed, oh, this is a closer-up view of that play area, again, with the entrance at this location, basically the play area around the building, and then a gate, and being able to get back into the building from a door that's located on the west, and there's also another door located on the north. The existing company that offices within the northeast part of the... is Phillips, excuse me, Phillips Planning, Inc. And they have indicated that they are opposed to the daycare, and also opposed to the outdoor play area, as it's directly outside of their office, tenant suite, and where they have conferences, et cetera. We did receive a number of additional emails that have come in, and we've provided these to the planning commission, and they will go to the city council. The packet included a number of emails that we had received up to the date that the packet was prepared, and then these seven were additional comments that were provided. All of the written comments were in opposition to the application. In terms of parking and loading... Oops, I don't have the one thing I was going to show you on here. In terms of parking and loading for this particular application, the site does have enough parking to accommodate the daycare. There are 95 spaces on-site. The parking associated with the daycare is a lot less than the community center application that we heard at our last meeting. Total, the number of spaces required for all of the existing office, the vacant office space if it were to be occupied, and the proposed daycare would be between 85 to 92 parking spaces, and there are 95 parking spaces on-site. We do have our consultant engineer, Brian Ameth, who is here this evening. They did prepare an overview of the traffic and transportation for the site, and that is included in the packet. Briefly summarizing, the impacts to McAndrews Road would be a little bit over 2% associated with the daycare, which McAndrews Road is constructed to be able to accommodate that. They did not anticipate additional issues along Frontier Court. There is no other outside-of-the-site parking that's proposed as part of this application, and existing turn lanes, et cetera, should be able to accommodate the traffic with the use. Make sure we cover everything. There is no trash enclosure on the site. The applicant has indicated that they would work with the owner to construct a trash enclosure to meet the ordinance. We did not get specifications of that, but that is something that will be taken care of. They're not proposing an additional signage on the building at this time. And in terms of the police and fire code reviews, there will need to be the internal changes that were identified, and they will need to submit a building permit to make those. Neither the building official or fire chief feel that there would be anything that they would need to do that could not be done under a standard permit process. So it should not have any issues from a building and fire code standpoint with what's proposed. With that, the recommendation from city staff is to recommend to the planning commission and city council a denial of the PUD amendment. That is primarily based on the approval of the 1997 PUD for the small office use, and that this is an intensification. Again, we don't have the same issues that the community center assembly posed for the last application. So this is the recommendation from staff, and we are here to address any questions or provide any information that the commission would like to hear.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, you have the floor. Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Deb, can you help me understand this PUD? Initially, in 1993, this subject parcel, along with the parcels to the north and to the east, was approved under a PUD?
Correct.
In 1993, what land uses were associated with that PUD?
It was always guided and zoned for B3 general commercial, and there are a whole host of uses that could be included in that, including everything up to open storage with a PUD or conditional use permit. To give you an idea, the B3 zone is the same underlying zone of the Burnsville Shopping Center area, allows for restaurants and fast food and businesses, offices, retail, all of those types of things. So that's what was allowed all the way from the time that the city was incorporated in 1964 up until this 1997 PUD amendment for this particular site.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair. So, okay, so in '97, a subsequent amendment was negotiated because the McDonald's on the Holiday proposed a use on the subject site?
Not on the subject site, but across the street to the east. That's correct.
Okay.
There was another application, yes, and that PUD amendment was ultimately withdrawn. City council was going to deny it. The applicant withdrew it. But it was that application for those intense land uses, the Holiday Station Store, McDonald's, that really, I think, brought out the neighborhood and the issues that the applicant, at that time, saw the landowner and the city, and then the property owners as well. So they decided, the owner at that time with the electric utility, decided to bring on a different developer, and they made application for this particular site to have the three small office buildings and to limit the use to that in order to make... in order to deal with the traffic situations, the one access, if you will, through Frontier Court. And also, they knew that the trips were going to be incongruent because we've got a lot of heavy industrial-type traffic through the maintenance facility. All of the city vehicles, in addition to the trucks and snowplows, et cetera, also go to the maintenance center for fueling. And then we've got the electric substation that also has larger trucks and vehicles that need to come in on an intermittent basis to service that. So in considering all of those things, and the limited access, and the neighborhood issues just of having commercial across from residential, that's ultimately what was negotiated.
Okay. If I may, I'm just trying to get a perspective. I think if we're going to continue to hear maybe other uses, I'd like to get a little history. So, the Holiday and McDonald's application was a PUD amendment. However, would they have met the B3 zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
At that time, yes.
So, they would have. So in 19...
'97.
No, I'm going to fast-forward here to '99. Another amendment was proposed for the Car Care Center co-op in one of the building, and it was approved and it's built. Under the B3 zoning, which was existing before that amendment, would those have been approved under those B3 zonings?
Yes, those uses were also allowed under the B3 zoning.
And subsequently, the 2000 also?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to, I want to clarify a couple of things, along with Commissioner Thomas's comments. And Deb, please correct me if I'm wrong. I've tried to do some research and understand the history. As we progressed through everything that Commissioner Thomas talked about, a very unique site from the standpoint of what was originally designed, and then the city needed the land for the maintenance facility, and then there was some opposition with the McDonald's and the Holiday Station Store. And I believe that this is a very unique situation where, as you progress through the PODs and what have been allowed and not allowed, really starting at County Road 11 and working your way west on McAndrews, we've done a... I think a lot of great work was done and a lot of thought was put into how you progress from a planning standpoint. The heavier commercial use is closer to County Road 11, and as you progress, it gets less and less. And I'm... Please correct me if I'm wrong. There's not a lot of situations where we had, A, the city, B, a developer, and C, a very active neighborhood that came together and negotiated this planned unit development for the property that we're speaking of today.
That's correct.
Where the process was put together that it's small office use, and it worked well. We already had some, we already had some stuff in place. We had the maintenance center with all the traffic, and we had the substation with the traffic associated with that. And the PUD really grew from a standpoint of where we're at today. And a PUD always rides with the land. It does not change from ownership.
That's correct.
And there was a negotiation that went on back in 1997 with the city, with the developer that wanted to develop the land and the neighborhood. And a PUD typically lends itself to difficult lot. And we've dealt with this a lot. You have a lot of encumbrances from the standpoint of utility easements and other things. And what was designed, the give and take, was office building and the pay that may be associated with it, less traffic, small office space, and that fit into the entire piece. And that's kind of how we got to where we're at today. Is that a...
That's correct.
A good... Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood the whole process, because it is... And I spoke to this at... to this at the previous application we did last week, there's a, it's a very unique situation, and we have a very unique PUD that a lot of people came together on and came up with a solution. Just real quick, I'd like to touch before we move on because there's a fair amount of information in our background from the standpoint of kind of how these processes work. There was a fair amount of frustration in many of the letters that the city is allowing applications. And if this was another application that was in a zoning district, as an example, this particular applicant is an allowed use in B1, B2, and B3. The applicant could choose something and move on. But in a situation where a negotiation happened to create a PUD that takes care of as many concerns as we can, where the city got what they needed, the developer got what they needed, and the neighborhood got as best a compromise that they could come to, came to that, and that almost, that typically happens in our government as a planned unit development. It's a negotiated compromise. The good, bad, and the different with the negotiated compromise is that if, since a planned unit development rides with the land, anybody can apply for a change to the PUD, and the city can't deny that application. They have to let it go through the process. If someone was applying for something in a zoning district where something is absolutely not allowed, that's a far different process. They have to literally change the zoning, and in many cases, that would require a change to our comp plan. And that's a much bigger hill to climb. And I thought that was a good time for us to kind of talk about that real quick so we kind of understand the process. So I just want to make sure that I've kind of appropriately walked through the PUD process for this particular property.
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Levy?
Yes. In reading the engineering report, it seems to me that traffic is not an issue. The traffic, the site and the McAndrews and Frontier Court can handle the traffic possibly a little tight at six o'clock or thereabouts, but they said, I read the report that it could be handled. What I see, however, is that, as Chairman pointed out, that this request would be a violation of the earlier negotiated PUD, that the playground is an issue with the existing tenant, and that runoff pollution from extra vehicles coming in, a few extra vehicles coming in, might be a problem. Is that a fair summary of where we're at, or is there more to it than I'm missing?
I would not characterize, what the applicant is asking to do is something that is allowed in that underlying B3 zone, but because this 1997 PUD is so restrictive, the only use that can go there is a small office, so anything different from that would need to come in to amend the PUD. In terms of surface water management, part of why this project was approved is because the owner, the property owner at the time, granted these large drainage and utility easements in this area and then across the north and the south. They also constructed this stormwater pond, which takes runoff from the site and infiltrates into this pond before it enters Dig Pond and then before water enters ultimately down into Al Magnet Lake. So they made physical improvements to the site to improve the water quality or to take care of water quality from this parking area. This applicant's not proposing to increase the size of the parking, so really, I don't believe that stormwater management is an issue. It would be the same as if all of these were developed with small offices taking up the parking lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Other commissioners, questions?
Quick question. Based on the nineteen, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Deb, for your presentation. Based on the 97 PUD, was Valley Natural Foods and the Car Wash and the Copy Store all granted deviations to go into those locations based on the 97 PUD?
No. The 1997 PUD only dealt with the subject site.
Okay.
The other side, everything to the east of Frontier Court was part of a separate planned unit development. So those were, that site, everything to the east of Frontier Court was an outlaw that was created after the initial PUD in 93 for any commercial use in the B3 zone, similar to the subject site we're dealing with. Again, any commercial use within the B3 zone. Then what happened is the first development to come along occurred at this, at this location with the 1997 PUD, and that's just for the three office buildings at this site.
I see. Okay. And then I just had a couple of follow-up questions about the applicant. Are they in there now similar to the last meeting we had?
No, they are not.
They're not located in there now? Okay, so, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Workman?
Commissioner Thomas raised his hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one follow-up, history lesson again. 1997 PUD amendment, small office.
Correct.
What's the definition of a small office in that PUD?
Actually, we have to go by the definitions in the zoning ordinance for office, and that has changed over time. Small, or office uses used to include things like barber shops, chiropractic, dentist clinics, those types of things. At the time that this PUD was approved, those uses were all part of an office. And I believe it was 2000, or 2012, I believe, we made amendments to the ordinance and we categorized these. So several of those uses are now not office uses. They're known as personal services, things like a barber shop, beauty shop, those types of things. We also created a separate category for medical clinics, dental clinics. So the definition of office has changed from 1997 to now. And so we're dealing with, if someone wanted to do a chiropractic, which is there now, that was approved, an approved use at the time that it went in. If you wanted to do that now, you would need to come in for a PUD amendment because that's no longer in the definition of office.
Even though it's embedded in, it doesn't run with that PUD in 1997 and the uses that were associated at that time?
No. That just indicated small office. It didn't specify all of the different uses.
So in 1997, was daycare considered a small office use?
That I would have to check. I believe that daycare has always been listed separately, but I would need to verify that.
And today's, under today's zoning ordinance, it would be, or zoning use, land use, it would be a separate use?
Yes, under today's zoning, daycare is a separate use, although it is a permitted use in all of our business zones except before.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Benke?
Deb, history lesson again. The 1999 PUD amendment with the Car Care Center, the Food Co-op, et cetera?
Yes.
Did it get scrutinized like the 1997?
I don't believe so. I think in that case, that was a different, they had a larger lot area. I can't say for certain who came out, you know, to discuss those, but at least as far as the record, as far as I know, those uses were considered to be, again, allowable uses. And they were, they were, again, a little bit more specific because they said specifically a Car Care Center, specifically a Food Co-op, and then one other building. So they didn't just say all the B3 uses, they listed those three. And for whatever reason, that application did not move forward. And then in 2000, they came back again with what is actually proposed out there. I believe in 1999, that Car Care Center was going to be a larger aspect of that PUD, and they ended up changing that. So we got the Copy Center included in that. And then another office where Celadon is now, the small detached Car Wash, and then Valley Natural Foods or a Food Co-op was always contemplated for the corner.
Yeah, I sort of remember all that, too. I think it was an auto mall that they were proposing, and that, of course, was much more significant there.
Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, I'm aware that a daycare, requirements for a daycare, they have to meet certain requirements for a daycare. Our purpose is to determine the land use. So if we recommend the approval of the PUD and the city council approves, then who takes care of the other arrangements for, you know, the bathrooms and all these things, playground for the daycare?
Certainly. This daycare would require to be licensed through the state of Minnesota, so most of those provisions would be set through the state. And then also, there were the corresponding requirements through the building code and fire code we would apply at the time of permit.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Does anyone like to speak to the applicant? Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The land use is based on staff, or on parking, excuse me, and as you know, that was a big concern of mine, and it still is. My question to the applicant is staffing. Hundred and sixteen proposed children.
So we can bring him up and I'll let you address that?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sir, please step up to the podium. I'd like you to give us your name and your address for the record.
My name is Abdalatin Ali from Lakeville, and I'm interested in doing daycare on the 13th.
And your address in Lakeville?
Two zero five five six Hampshire Way, Lakeville, Minnesota.
So go ahead, and then we'll get to Commissioner Thomas's question. You were saying...
It's my wife's dream to open up a daycare location, and we have been doing the daycare business, in-home daycare, which maximum we can accept only about sixteen kids. And over the years, we got more experience and we felt like, hey, we need to do, we need to expand. And by doing that, we have to open up a center. Once you have to go center, it's no, it's, there was all the same requirements and guidance with the state. It's DHS requirement, and we have to go by, they have several rules we have to go by, bathroom wise, toilets, sinks, and fire, spring water, safety, all that stuff, and playground. It's the rules we have to go by. And the whole process usually takes about eight months. It's nothing that happens overnight. I mean, let's say if this thing gets approved, planning review, approve everything, it will take up to eight months, basically. So it's nothing like all the easy stuff. You just go in and you have to do safety. It's really serious business when it comes to safety because it's kids involved, and we have to make sure, and the state has to make sure that safety, we meet all requirements. Until we, we meet everything, state will not approve anything.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The state rules have ratios for the number of staff versus children and the ages of the children. Can you, can you inform me of what those rules are based on the age of the children?
For infant, I believe, is one to six.
Okay.
And for toddler and, I mean, toddler and what you call preschool is one to eight, and then school age is one to ten.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioners, other questions of the applicant? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Thank you, sir. We may ask you to come back up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
This is a public hearing, so at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing. No different than what we have done in the past, I will invite people to come to the podium. Please give us your name and your address for the record. And then I would, I would wish that everyone try to keep the comments to something new. So I've tried to remind people in the past, as we go through and discuss specific topics, once we get a topic, we understand and we've discussed it, and then as subsequent people come up and speak to the public hearing, we would only wish that everyone try to bring us new topics that have not been yet addressed. So I would appreciate that. With that, I'd like to open the public hearing and like to invite the first-person man, please step up to the podium and give us your, the microphone's right there, and give us your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Kathy Fink, and I live in Dig Pond Town Hall, 1400 McAndrews Road East.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate your time.
May I ask one question? What was the maximum, Deb, on the amount of children? Because the other night it was a hundred. Did I hear, I couldn't hear everything with, off the mic. It seemed like it became more than a hundred because...
The application has always said a hundred and sixteen would be the very maximum.
Okay. Because the other night it was a hundred, but even at that point, and I know you talked about traffic, but you're still talking two hundred cars in an, I mean, in a day. And you get a hundred drop off and a hundred cars picking everybody up plus staff. My, one of my big concerns is the noise, the level of the playground. I'm just right over, a little bit farther west of that, and when I bought my property, I was, I was told that this was business only. And part, you know, I spent a lot of money on my townhome, and I spend a lot of money on my dues. And I, my backyard is real private and whatnot, and I just can feel that there, with that playground there and the noise, it would be really disturbing and it bothers me because I, I spend a lot of money to live there and I did a lot of research on it. So my question would just be to consider the playground area, the amount of children that would be there, that even, I guess now the catering trucks that would be going in and out, which I didn't know the other day for food. But it's mostly, my concern is mostly the noise, the level of noise. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman.
I need to ask you for your, for your address for the record.
That's fine.
Even though we've gotten to know each other.
Good evening, Commissioners as well. My name is Jim Giebel. I live at seventeen zero one Victoria Lane. First, I'd like to start off by stating that the turnout for this evening's a little bit lighter than we had a couple of weeks ago, and I can assure you that's not because of a lack of interest or a lack of opposition. It is because we have our Lake Al Magnet, Lake Association meeting going on simultaneously.
That was in a lot of our background.
It was.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I would say the majority of the letters that were forwarded to us listed that as a reason for not attending.
Usually thirty-five, forty people in attendance there that traditionally in the past, and I'm sure were that may tonight, so just wanted to, I guess, bring that fact up. The emails you received, I guess the ones I saw from the Friday packet, were from sub-residents and also tenants within the complex, so I think that's an important point. And I also, I guess, think it's somewhat ironic that the Lake Association meeting is this evening to discuss strategy and topics about the lake, and clean water, and quality of the water, and clarity and those types of things. We're in, we're here once again to talk about a proposal that is a high-traffic, high-density type proposal that's very much against the lake quality, I believe. The meetings we've had for twenty-some years, and they continue, we are an active neighborhood group, and we want to protect the lake as much as we can, and I think the commitment from the neighborhood and the residents toward the water quality is of utmost importance and is directly related to this project. I won't forego talking anything about the PUD. I think we've all had our history lessons on that over the last couple of sessions here. I think it is very relevant, obviously, to the property. And suffice to say that we're all aware of the intended use of this property. We believe that many of the same issues that were raised at the community center application several weeks ago apply to the proposed daycare center as well. These issues were brought forth by this commission in closing statements, as well as addressed at the city council, including topics such as children's safety related to the two ponds and high-volume traffic, the lack of parking spaces during critical drop-off and pickup times, the parking lot flow, heavy equipment, trucks, snowplows, et cetera, on Frontier Court are in direct conflict with cars and pedestrians. Traffic. Brian, was it? I guess in the report, I don't know if you wrote that from, I guess the one question... I guess in, in the report, I don't know if you wrote that from, I guess the one question, this is if you guys want to look at it in the report, it's the third paragraph down. The comment is a trip generation of five hundred daily trips into and out of the site and a daily traffic count of nineteen thousand two hundred on McAndrews adjacent to the site, blah, 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 increase of two point six percent. But I guess my question is, five hundred and eight daily trips. So is a trip like inbound and then outbound is another trip?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess that's my understanding. So when I look at that number, five hundred and eight, and two point six percent, isn't that much, really. I mean, it's twenty thousand cars already, two point six percent. But let's take that five oh eight number and break that down. Because if you look at that, that's a hundred and twenty-five trips in to that daycare. And then it's a hundred and twenty-five trips out from that daycare. And then later in the evening, they come back and it's a hundred and twenty-five trips in and a hundred and twenty-five trips out. That gives you five hundred. So at that intersection of Frontier Court and McAndrews, five hundred times are going to be cars there that weren't there previously. That to me is heavy traffic. That's outlandish traffic, five hundred times. So the two point six, yes, probably minimal. But if you want to put a percentage on Frontier Court, somebody making left, somebody making right, somebody turning into the driveway into the complex, it's hundreds of percent, probably thousands of percent of increased traffic. And that's been talked about over and over in generalities, I believe, but these are a real live number, five oh eight. So I think that is a very scary number. And then if you think about a daycare open, we don't know the hours, six to six, whatever it is, but, and I haven't done drop-off daycare for a while, but that's a two-hour window. People get to work by eight, so they're dropping them off. A hundred, a hundred and sixteen applicants, whatever, children there, whatever, just say a hundred. You're looking at over a two-hour period, a hundred and twenty-five cars is one car a minute. Hundred and twenty minutes, a hundred and twenty-five cars. You're one car a minute going in, coming out, parking. So they got to park. And I think parking is an issue because we got a hundred and twenty people coming in here, a hundred and twenty vehicles coming in here. And they park, they get out, they get the child out of the, the seat, take them in, you know, get them set up, come back out. And there's all that many other people doing the same thing. So parking, I think, is, is going to be an issue. I don't know what the employees ended up being, but you know, you're going to have twenty, twenty-five spaces confirmed for employees with that. So that number is just, just huge. I, I can't get over that. So think about that one, I guess. Conclusion is just the proposal intensifies the use of the site and is in direct conflict with the original PUD as we've discussed tonight. Is not permitted use. High-traffic volume twice a day in two short timeframes, six to eight, four to six, the most busiest times on County Road eleven. Increase the volume of the Frontier Court intersection. I mean, everybody knows the situation there already. We're going to have more congestion, more noise, more pollutants, the leakage, the oil, the gas, the antifreeze. And mainly not so much from just a parking, but five hundred and eight additional cars. Five hundred per day in a week, twenty-five hundred. Take fifty weeks, a hundred and twenty-five thousand vehicle trips to that site. That becomes massive. It's not supported by the current infrastructure in my belief. The PUD was designed and approved for small business. We've heard some definitions of that tonight because originally because of limited parking, concern for traffic generation and its related impacts. Nothing has changed from nineteen ninety-seven. If anything, the situation has gotten much worse. It was right then, it's right now. These are the rules, the regulations, the zoning and the code that are in place that govern the use of this property and we believe they should be enforced accordingly. There is a remark made at our last session here that stays with me and I believe applies again to the daycare center. And that is, the intentions are good. I went to the informational meeting. I enjoyed Mr. Abdallah, but it's not the right place. It's the same situation. Intentions are good, but it's not the right place for it. We strongly oppose the PUD amendment request and we agree with the city staff's recommendation that the planning commission vote to deny the PUD application to change the building use to daycare. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Okay, sir, can we ask, we have a Commissioner with one question. Commissioner Banky, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Gribble.
Yes, sir.
I know you can't speak for anyone other than yourself at this point, but given what staff said about the change in how the city characterizes office uses, would you be objecting to a chiropractor or another use that may have been allowed before but not now?
Absolutely not. We would not object to that. I consider that to be a small business. The definition of a small business that came out tonight is very different, I guess, of what I had in, in my mind. And I think the neighborhood would not have issue with that. And I don't know if that's what's driving this, you know, that we're going to be, a trend, I guess, is developing here, that these PUDs are going to be forthcoming maybe. And if it helps to sit down with the landowner, with the, he's got two real estate agents listed names out front, with the city of Brensville, some residents from the neighborhood, Deep Pond Town, Townhomes, from the residents around the lake, as we did the last time. And if we need to expand that definition to include those types of small businesses, I don't see an issue with it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We, to stay focused on the topic.
Correct.
It was off our PUD application.
Right.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak? Sir, please step up to the podium and, and so far, I'd like to recap, we've talked a little bit about number of children, we've talked about noise associated with the playground, we have talked about traffic and number of trips, we've talked a little bit about water quality, parking lot flow and sheer number of parking. So, sir, please give us your, your name and your address for the record.
My name is Christopher Heilacher. I live in thirteen eighteen McAndrews Road East. I'm a owner for sixteen years when that development was built. I live there. I commute there and the traffic is horrible in the morning. Now you're going to put that much more traffic on us getting out. There needs to be a stoplight if you're going to use that Frontier Court to stop it. Because I can't get out in the morning because there's people coming out of that area. As a gentleman said back there, five hundred and some more cars are going to be put in that area at that time period and you're telling me over in the engineering department it's okay? Go over there when you have that hazardous material dumped.
Sir, we, I mean, I appreciate the comment, but you know, the engineering has, has put together their plan and given us their suggestions.
I know. But go there and look at it.
So I completely understand, sir, but I mean.
I mean, when they, when they have that hazardous material dumped, they have policemen out there. They have to.
I know. I, I bend that, I understand. And that's, would be separate than this application, so I would appreciate if we could.
Keep it that. Dump. I would say the traffic is going to be horrendous.
Okay.
And the parking stalls, when you say ninety-six, I mean, I know there was another development, I was traveling at the time of a civic center or a community center. Now you're putting a daycare and you're going to put a community center in there? That's going to even triple the traffic coming in at the hours at three and six o'clock at night. I'd like to get home in about ten minutes, not an hour. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time, sir. We appreciate you coming in this evening.
(inaudible).
Hey, hang on, just, okay.
(inaudible).
No, you, come on.
Brian Root, Sullivan Systems. We are east of the development, one three seven nine five Frontier Court.
Good evening, Mr. Root. Thank you for your time this evening.
Good to see you again. Our requirements, of course, and our needs are different than the, than the residents that live to the south. Our manufacturing shift starts at six-thirty, so we have people that are showing up between six and six-thirty. I've asked them if there's ever an issue with traffic at that time of the morning. They said no. So again, we, we have no issues with the, with the daycare. I drive by a daycare on my way to work every day and I pay attention to the traffic coming in and out of it. And I can't notice any different than any other time of the day. So for us, on, at least on the east side, it's not an issue. I do recognize and I respect that the residents to the south have their own issues, but for us, it's not a problem.
Thank you. I'll get everyone's comments and then you'll have the applicant have a chance to come back up. Okay, let me just make sure I've got everyone and then I'll allow you to address that. Sir, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is John Foley. I live at one four one two four Frontier Lane. I've been here for the twenty years when this thing first started. Unlike twenty years ago, we had a problem looking for a, a solution. Now it looks like we have a solution looking for problems. And by the way, Mr. Braddock, I was, thank you for enlightening me about how these applications need to be accepted.
Okay.
Kind of like anybody can sue anybody for anything, it has to be accepted because it seemed to be a, an ongoing problem. But I think it's going to be an ongoing solution. One of the things that impressed me about the last couple of weeks ago, when we discussed the daycare center, I mean, the, the religious center and, and community center, was that a precedent is starting to be set here. We look back twenty years about the thought that went into this particular fragile piece of property and how city residents, the DNR, developers came together and did exactly what you hoped was going to be done with this property. We helped make an agreement. And as Jim pointed out, twenty years ago, the impact on this fragile, delicate piece of property has increased by twenty years. Residents have increased, the, the associated traffic has increased and the congestion on that particular corner has increased. And the differences between a, a community center and a, and a daycare center are distinctions without difference as they apply to this particular property. They're all impacted by the same thing. They're all impacted by the safety and the access for that road and what it does to the land around it, how it impacts the, the lake. But the thing that's come out of this, and I think it's going to go forward as you accept more applications for, for an amendment, is that you're going to have a precedent being set here. A precedent, as you probably all are aware, is a very powerful guide in law and certainly in civics. So again, we're with the process and it's working. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. Appreciate your time. Any, ma'am, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Maybe people are tired of me saying that, but I still need to say it.
I got it.
Thank you.
My name is Diana Mauer. I live at one three eight zero zero Frontier Lane. It's right across the street from the proposed site. Couple of things I wanted to say, try not to repeat anything, but it's already been stated. First of all, just wanted to give a little bit of coloring to the, the statements that have been made about the traffic. My sixteen-year-old, oh, well, she's fifteen now, she's going to be sixteen and she's going to have her own license soon. And one of the things that was a big learning curve for her was crossing from McAndrews. And it may not be such an issue if someone is just crossing half of that lane going to work, which I think that one of the previous speakers alluded to, and I could see how that wouldn't be a problem, is when you're trying to cross the whole, the whole span of McAndrews to get to the other side is, is when it became difficult and we had to show her that, yes, it will timeout, you just got to wait and wait and wait. So that was one of the things we, we made sure that we were coaching her on. I think she's got it down now. But the other thing is that we moved into our home shortly after, what we understand now, we get that history lessons today, was in nineteen ninety-eight. And with our understanding at that time, we did speak to the neighbors and understood a lot of the development hadn't even happened around, around these sites. And so we were really surprised when we moved in and all of a sudden there was all this development that went in on fields that were vacant before. So the neighborhood certainly has changed. And my ongoing concern is our property values. And as, as this becomes a busier and busier site, that the value that we had in our home and the upkeep that we've put in the home and the, and the improvements that we made may all be for, you know, for our own enjoyment only as property values may decline as these increasing traffic and increasing use will impact us. And that would be my concern.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Anyone, oh, please step up to the podium.
My name is Terry Heilacher. I live at thirteen eighteen McAndrews Road East in Deep Pond. And my main concern also is the traffic. It is horrendous now when you're trying to cross the street during business hours especially. And to actually get out on McAndrews, you have to go through Wingate if you want to be safe and go up to that light. So I want to stress the increase in traffic would be horrendous on us homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public? Okay. Sir, why don't you allow the applicant, applicant to come back up? Thank you.
Thank you guys for letting me. Okay. I keep hearing this five hundred traffic every word, but if you look at the, the floor we submitted, eighty-five of the kids are school age, which means they all go to school. And the morning, basically, we'll have about twenty kids, the most, and which is unlikely anyway. They, it's hard to get infant to come during daytime. So from six to three or four o'clock, we have only twenty kids, the most, which is infant and toddler. And then from three o'clock to six, if we get any, is school age. It's a three-hour window that we have most of traffic. Morning is nothing. Nobody usually show up. It's infant mostly and everybody else goes to school unless it's summertime. So I mean, there's no way, there's, and what's the chance that every parent have only one kid and there's, why are there? So therefore you have hundred cars, but there's, there's a chance that there's family that has two kids, three kids, who knows, more than one. So there's never going to be a five hundred cars. So I would just like to state that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing now I will close the public hearing, I'd like to thank everyone for your, your comments this evening. Once again, I appreciate, it kind of means a lot to us that we have some people that come in and discuss issues with us. I think, Ms. Garros, do you have anything to add before we go to discussion?
No, I do not.
I'll start.
You have your phone to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stig. Once again, in both these applications, I've, I've spent a fair amount of time in the area. And I have, I have concerns in reference to what I spoke to earlier from the standpoint of what was put together for the planned unit development and the work that was put into it. And that's a very unique situation in the city. And so I, I'm, I'm, would not be in support of, of this application or I would be in support of denial for several reasons. One, and I've spoke, the PUD, we have very few situations where a city, a developer and a neighborhood have come together and put together a planned unit development. And that PUD does ride with the land and any developer that buys a piece of property should do some investigation and know.
should do some investigation and know prior to it. And I think what the city did, and I was not around then, and I can't second-guess what they did, it seems to me like a lot of thought was put into that. Number two, daycare is a permitted use in a B1, which is office business, B2, which is neighborhood business, and B3, which is general business. So, as a city, we have a fair amount of zoning already set up to take this use as a permitted use where they wouldn't even come to us. I do have a fair, I always look at these things, if this was in my neighborhood, or, you know, I live on a busy, my house backs up to a busy street, and I'm near a construction company, but that was there when I bought the house. And I can't ask them to change. And so, I always look at these from a, try to look at them from, as a resident of Burnsville, how does this affect the neighborhood and the tenants? I was very moved by a couple of the tenants in another building from a standpoint of their ability to do business and traffic. And the tenant that did write to us in this building, you know, a fair amount of their view is going to be completely blocked by the play area, and I am not comfortable with the play area. I did walk around the building, and so, that bothers me. And then I would, I guess, kind of finish. Any tenant that's going to take up this percentage of this building, I believe, is not going to fit the original intent of the PUD. So, and I try to take my thoughts and put them together with kind of what I've researched in the background. So, with that said, that's my thought. Commissioners, who would like to speak next?
I'll go first.
Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
I'm going to just speculate, if this building with the other three tenant lots full, the other two buildings, if all three of these buildings are occupied at full capacity, which would be the goal, would we be sitting here talking about traffic? Again, our biggest concern is traffic, and these buildings aren't even at 100% occupancy. If these are going to be filled with insurance offices or any type of other business that's going to have clients coming and going that is under permitted use, I would guess that that would increase traffic as well. Obviously, the PUD is in place for a reason, and I tend to agree with that. But I feel like this spot and these buildings are destined to have traffic problems, whether they're permitted or not. So, I would just like to know, I don't know if there's an answer for this right now, but what is the solution for this corner? If we're going to be talking about this building again in the future, like, it sounds like we might be, we should maybe start thinking about an answer to that question.
Commissioner Workman, we'd like to, we try to divide the topics. I agree 100%. The application in front of us today is with the current writing PUD.
Absolutely.
And I don't disagree with anything you said from the standpoint, at some point, to assist in all this, if the neighborhood and the landowner can get together and work out something in the future, but that, as to what those uses might be, but that's a completely separate topic from the topic that's in front of us.
I would just end by saying, I will, you know, the PUD is in force for a reason, and I will vote that way as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Workman. Commissioner Thomas, you look like you were going to speak next.
I'm ready. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on Mr. Workman's comments, I know it doesn't apply, but I think it's put out there for staff. When do you look at traffic? It exists as a problem right now, so I'll stop at that also. So, as I look at this, the same issues exist as the previous applicant. I mean, traffic's an issue. It's not a capacity issue. It's perceived. We can divide that in 100 different ways. It exists today, it'll exist for the future uses. What I looked at previously was parking. Technically, we could not meet the parking on the previous PUD amendment application, so that was why I voted against that one. In this particular case, I'm looking at the 1997 PUD. It was negotiated in good faith by both sides, and I think the city should honor that PUD, and I think the residents should also. And there's one component in here that's going to give me some insight as to how I would vote, and that would be what the small office use was in 1997. And I think that's important today with this applicant, and I think it's going to be important as we look at other uses in this building. And until that information is in front of us, I don't think I can make a real informed decision personally. But when that information is in front of me, I think I would intend to vote in favor of the existing PUD as it was written and as it was permitted in 1997.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Levy. Sorry, Commissioner Singh, his hand is faster than yours.
I'm two days younger.
Oh, okay.
I give, I give...
I defer to you.
The applicant's last comments about the school-age kids coming later, I could foresee a time when two or three buses, school buses, would be there to drop off kids. And the comments made about noise in the neighborhood, school buses go down my residential street at 6:00 in the morning, and I'd rather not hear them, but I'm afraid I do. And so, the noise associated with them, let alone cars, would be something that I would object to. Thank you.
Commissioner Singh.
Just picking up on what Commissioner Levy had said, six school-age students can bring in six buses, depending on what schools they go to. And if this is a daycare that will track students from different parts of the city, it may be coming from six different schools. Anyway, we have talked quite a bit about the traffic. I still feel there's a problem with traffic. People who live there and have to use those streets know what it is and hear from them, and I think they have a point, but much said about traffic. I think a daycare in this development is out of character. This development is agreed upon with a lot of these people, or many of them who are not here, and the city, working on the PUD, and they said, "small office." And I think a daycare is out of character. So, that's number one. It's not even near to a small office when you're talking about over 100 kids, children, and especially during summer, when schools are closed, that's when most parents try to find daycare for their children. So, I can see a problem with that. It's unfair to the other, the Phillips planning that is in that same building. It's unfair to that company to be having kids playing outside your window, and they have a conference room there. I mean, that's why I said it's out of character. You should not have a school or a daycare in that development. I value very much the people who have come tonight and who have sent messages, emails or so, to our meeting tonight. I value their input, those who have come. I commend you for coming. Your voices should be heard. You live there, or you own property there, and you are impacted. I don't care if you put an office, or you put a school, or a daycare. Your coming out and addressing the commission, to me, is very, very meaningful, and I value that. A lot of people, as I've said, who worked on the PUD, the time and the effort that they expended should not go in vain. And I agree with somebody else who said the city should, you know, support these people and keep the PUD what it was, what it was made out for when we developed it. So, I, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I cannot support this application. I'd be voting against it, and I hope you'll join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Benkey, that leaves you.
I struggle with this one mainly because of the PUD. I'm really disturbed that the new owner of the building is putting it on to his potential lesses to come and try and challenge what is a 20-year-old, 20-year-old PUD that was put up for a reason. We've all talked about what went into it before, and the fact that the original owners of the property decided, along with the city and the neighbors, what worked there. And that was when McAndrews was really kind of at 38, and probably was two lanes. Right in that period was when it went up to four. You know, I think it's clear that the traffic is going to be an issue, but what's being shown here is at the limit. That's fine, you know, so the road can handle it, but the PUD says that this is not appropriate. I think the way it was stated, there but for the PUD, this use would be allowed. But the PUD exists, and exists for a reason, and I can't support. I haven't heard anything tonight that suggests a rationale to say that the PUD should be amended. And I think that, to me, is key, is, without some, something from somebody, it's, hey, I want to do this. Now, the PUD says you can't.
Thank you, Commissioner Benkey. I appreciate everyone's comments this evening. Commissioner Thomas, I sense you would like to have the floor.
I'm conflicted. I think that the commission is going to go to vote to recommend denial. And if the PUD and the land uses in 1997 did not permit a daycare, I would agree with that. I guess I can't make an informed decision tonight. I would really like to know that information, so that's where I'm kind of conflicted.
Okay. I appreciate that comment. We can't get that, I don't, I mean, we do know that today, daycare is called out as a specific allowed use in several of our zoning districts.
Including B3.
Yeah, including B3. But the way I tried to think through that very same thought was, because that's when I inquired about B1, B2, and B3, and as this property progressed to a B3 PUD, then the PUD sort of supersedes the B3 standpoint, and the PUD states at the time, "small business." And that's how I tried to think through it. I completely understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Thomas.
Yeah, I think it's a definition deal. A 1997 definition versus a 2016 definition. And I think that's strictly what it is. I agree with everything you're saying. It's just that, I mean, the definition of a small business has changed. A chiropractic clinic couldn't go in there today, correct?
It would need a PUD amendment.
It'd need a PUD amendment.
Because of the change.
So, I mean, I think it's only fair to find out what the definition of a small business was in 1997. And I think, again, I'm going to go back, we're going to need to know that for the next application.
At some point.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other comments? Thank you for your time and everyone's comments. I would, at this point, entertain a motion. Mr. Commissioner Benkey.
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend, I would recommend that the planning commission have staff recommend to the city council denial of the PUD application to change the building use to daycare. And I would like to, I think I'd like to amend that to say, "from small business," only because that's what we have to keep coming back to. And I think that Commissioner, that he's correct, we do need to find out exactly what that includes, and I think we can, I think we all agree here that it does not include a daycare. It's, I mean, it's not, when I read through the B1, the B2, I'm sorry, guys, when I read through the B1, the B2, and the B3 uses in the zoning ordinance, I did not feel that the bulk of them would constitute small business. But I think that kind of clarity is going to help us and the landowner. So, I think what I would like to remind people of with the recommendation is that the request was to change the building use to daycare from small business.
Your suggestion is to just add at the end, "from small business." Ms. Carroll, so I'm going to refer back to you from a standpoint of a recommendation.
Oh, it's there, though. This one says it. Thank you.
See, Doug, you sensed what Commissioner Benkey was going to say.
Thank you. Yes, I would, as the staff has written the recommendation.
So, I have a motion on the floor that mirrors the recommendation on the screen. Do I hear a second?
I would second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Benkey, second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Staff, do you have the division of the House?
Nay. Thomas and...
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time this evening. The next item on our agenda is updates. Commissioners, do you have any updates this evening?
No.
None? Staff, any updates?
No further updates.
Okay. At this point, I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
Don't move it, Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.